We're a few minutes late, but I will call the meeting to order. We'll start with the termination of a hockey. I got a little distracted. Jerry, are you willing to clerk for tonight?
Um, okay.
I'm gonna hand that off to you, so then I would ask you if you have a call.
Tom Casper.
Yes.
Deb Davis.
Yes.
Jason Engelbert.
Wait, wait.
Okay, keep going.
See. Do it for me.
Sorry.
Richard Olson.
Yeah.
Jerry Rorschel. James Wolfe.
I am here.
We do have a form.
All right.
Howard Bodie.
The formal rise for their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right. For all those watching, the board is moving towards electronic agendas, and so a number of us, for the first time tonight, are trying to put that into action, working with an online agenda. So if things progress a little less smoothly than usual, please, we beg your forgiveness on that. So we have an electronic agenda. We also have been a small little addendum to that agenda that you had in front of you tonight relating to some gifts that we have come in. So with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Your motion in a second. All those in favor?
Oh, wait, I have it.
Sorry?
I'm looking for, where do we have the naming of the fitness center?
That's in the findings.
So I was just looking, seeing there are several people here, if we might move that up after the consent agenda, so they don't have to sit with other items.
Yep, we got her.
I'm happy to consider that a friendly amendment, but do you have any objection to that? What item was that?
It is item 10A.
10A. All right, so 10A will go after the consent agenda. Any other discussion of the agenda? All right, having a motion in a second. All those in favor of the agendas as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, recognitions and awards. I don't see any tonight.
Nope, I don't have any.
Community comment. Is it a time for any members of the community who have an issue they would like to bring forward to the board to do so?
Hi, my name is Leslie Reesing. I'm a mother of three and a firm believer in Jesus Christ. And I come here tonight just with some ideas or suggestions for you guys. I'd like to bring tradition back into the school system and teach the kids, the children, the basic manners. I think we've fallen away as society, and kids have fallen away from respect or even just, if you don't have something nice to say, don't say it, and, you know, always tell the truth and wait to be spoken to and don't interrupt, those kinds of things. And it's not just the school system's job, it's our job too. And so I come here tonight and I'd like to see us implement some kind of programs that we're both on the same page. And it would be nice, because I think it would, it would help doing away with the bullying and even, you know, maybe some adults that have fallen away from manners. But I believe we have an obligation here to teach the children, and they have a right to come into this place and have all the tools accessible to them. We can look to some of our leaders out there in government or even role models of the children, and it's always not so good. And so we can't control that, but I'd like to say that a leader is not born overnight. It's developed, and it starts on the front lines, and that's at home and that's at the school level. And with that, I'd like to say, you know, do we want to raise some leaders? Do we want to raise some more George Washingtons or Abraham Lincolns, you know? Or do we want to raise another generation of followers? And I would also like to say, you know, everybody's accountable for the children, and in the end, we're all going to be held accountable and judged for what we teach or lack of teach our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Move it, move it forward on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
I think that-
Do we need to do a roll on that?
Yep.
Tom Casper.
Aye.
Deb Davis.
Aye.
Jason Engelbert.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Rorschel. Aye. James Wolfe.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to take a moment to recognize some of the people that were on our consent agenda.
Please.
That will be retiring this year. There's four people, if I remember everything, that have thirty-plus years who will be leaving this district in the near future. It's very commendable that they've worked this long here and have served our children.
Well, second, Deb's feelings on that matter, I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board. Every year, we have a number of long-term employees of the district who have worked for us and served us well for many, many years. And we appreciate their services to our district. So on behalf of the entire board, I think we, I would thank them. Other comments? All right, moving along to the item number six, curriculum.
No, we're gonna do the 10A.
Yep.
Oh, sorry, thank you, Jerry.
James, Jerry.
James.
A lot of people make that.
I consider that a compliment.
We won't comment on who is complimented and who is not in that exchange. So we'll move along to item 10A, consider approval of, where am I? Consider approval of the fitness center name. Todd, did you want to invite anyone up for that?
Yeah, if Chad and Bob and every, and you guys, if the whole crew wants to come up here and talk about that, that'd be great. I'd love to have Bob come up here, too, I think that would be appropriate. So choose who you want. I think it's, I think it's a real honor that you have somebody in our community that deserves recognition, that the fitness center is recognizing for, and I think that it tributes, it's an attribute to Bob and what he's done for our kids in this school district. It also is another way to draw a little bit of money, too, for the Booster Club for this project. So I think it's a good item for us to consider. So Chad, you want to just talk about the naming?
The naming of the, of the future fitness center at the high school, as we have, is we view the H. Robert Phelitz Fitness Center, named after Bob Phelitz here. The donation is by his childhood pal and in honor of, of, he donated, Joe Clapp, he is the gentleman's name, he's donated $200,000, which is approximately 50% of the actual building cost.
Questions or comments for?
Just made a couple of comments. I had the privilege, actually the honor of working with Bob for a number of years when I was an employee of the Fairbowl Schools. And I can think of no individual more deserving of the honor of having a building named after the quality of instruction that you've given to kids in the Phi Ed Department while you were a teacher, but also your involvement with them in coaches and your, as a coaching role in many, many sports. And I know that the individuals who you worked with, not only in the classroom, Bob, but also as you worked with them in the, in the athletic area, have gone on to be fine, upstanding individuals and representing Fairbowl Public Schools in the work that you did, so I just can't imagine anybody more deserving than you, Bob, to have this building named after you. It's well deserved. You're a credit to the educational field, a credit to yourself and your family, and I respect you a great deal, so. This person is to be recognized for recognizing Bob and the quality of individual videos.
Other comments or questions on this item?
I just want to say that if you were looking forward to staying through the board meeting, I apologize for bumping you off.
You're welcome to stay. Well, I can't possibly say what Jerry just said any better, so I'll simply say that I echo, and I'm sure the entire board echoes, what Jerry said. It's, it's wonderful to be a part of a district where we have former staff and members of our community who have done so much for our, for our kids, and have it recognized this way is, I think, is perfectly appropriate. And, and I think it's not a bad moment to also recognize the entire Booster Club at this, this moment. I'll confess, I'll make a confession here on the public record that when Chad said a little while ago that money was going to be raised for this facility as quickly as you said it was going to be, I was skeptical. And, and I could not be happier to seemingly be completely wrong about that, and this gift is just one piece of that. And so I want to thank the entire Booster Club and particularly Bob for your work for our district, so thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
I'd just like to say it was also my privilege to work with Bob over a number of years and a well-deserved recognition of his contribution, which Jerry said, right on, so, and thanks to the Booster Club as well. Way to go, Bob.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion in a second to approve, let me see if I get the, the name of the fitness center to be the H. Robert Phelitz Fitness Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Congratulations, and I think that deserves a compliment.
One other comment I'm gonna make is, when it's opened, Bob, I hope you're not standing around watching board members come in and exercise. But we won't do any disservice then, so.
Thank you guys very much.
With that, I would just like to thank the other members of the Booster Club Board, they, they all have families, they all give up a fair amount of time. We'll be moving, once we get this project done, we'll be moving on to enhancing student athletic experience and promoting school spirit, you know, at the high school within the Fairbowl Public Schools, so. All of you people, I didn't have to ask them twice, I asked them a lot of times, and they all jumped in once, so I would just like to thank the other Booster Club Board.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving right along to item number six, the curriculum. Starting with, the minutes are included in your packets, and I think we'll be getting a report from Tom. It's a hard act to follow Tom, I apologize, but.
Most definitely, but I'll try and just get through. We had our curriculum meeting on Thursday, February ninth. Much of the meeting was involved a presentation about the Avid Program from Ms. Cheryl Curry, who did a great job of enlightening me and other board members about this program, goal of which is to improve readiness for attendance in college. So I think that was a very positive thing, in my opinion. Remaining meeting time, since this was only our third meeting altogether since last fall, was involved plans for the future, and, and my, I expressed my hope that the curriculum committee would take a look at the possible impacts of possible budget cuts coming up. And so depending on when those possible cuts are released, the committee would engage in a discussion of, of the impact on that, on, on our curriculum and thus through, you know, through the curriculum in our areas of student achievement, and perhaps present some sort of commentary to the board reflecting the committee's judgment about those budget cuts.
Questions or comments for Tom? All right, thank you, Tom. Moving along to item number seven, policy committee. We'll start with a report. Who's reporting for the policy committee?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I am, okay. I wasn't sure, so at our last meeting, we just went over some of the concerns that were brought up about the transportation safety poli, new policy, and Todd had.
Garrett.
Talked to Garrett, thank you. About those and everything is in compliance. The type three refers to the operation of regular school bus, or compares to the operation of a regular school bus. So we're covered there, James. We talked about the expense reimbursement, bringing that tonight for first reading, just making some minor adjustments to match some policies together. Brought search of student lockers, desk, personnel possessions, and students' person. We are going to be bringing that back actually to the committee for further, though, we need some further discussion on that. Just some more first readings, student disability pledges of allegiance, students' employees with communicable diseases. Whoops, I'm sorry, no, that one we've had to wait on. So nothing really, most of it's just language change and updating some policies we've already had.
I will comment, though, that the policy committees, I think it's a really nice process that the district has in place for the policy review and approval, and I would just commend the committee on the progress that we've made with our policies. And we just had a discussion today about how far it's come apparently in the last few years, but it's, it's a nice process you have in place. We have it placed.
Questions or comments for Deb? Hearing none. We'll move on to item seven B on page thirty of your packet. Consider the approval of the following policies for second reading. This is an action item to, to adopt these policies. I don't have a list of those policies easily in front of me.
I can give you the numbers. Do you have?
They're in the packet, but.
Yep, I don't have them, they're just numbers on the attachments.
Right.
Yep, do you want me to go through them, or?
I think it'd be nice to at least read out the names, so that we can each.
Yep, two eleven is criminal or civil action against school, district, school board members, employees, or students. That's a boiler policy to protect you. Mandated reporting, four fourteen is mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Again, that's something that we have to do, it's a boiler. Online learning options, which has gone through technology committee, and they've taken a look at that. Transportation of public school students, we did go through the bus garage and transportation to review that, and they're fine with it. Tobacco-free environment, again, a boiler policy, most of you know what that all means. And then veterans' preference, we went through that, and the hiring process and so on. But again, that's a boilerplate to make sure that we're in compliance with all the statutes. So those are the policies that we have for the new ones.
All right.
Our second reading, I'm sorry.
All right, questions or comments on any of those policies? We'll act on them in one action unless a board member wants any of them removed from the others. So if there's any questions or comments on any of them, now is the time. Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the following policies, two eleven, four fourteen, six twenty-four, seven oh seven, four nineteen, and oh, four oh five.
So moved.
All right, we're second.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second to adopt the policies as stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. As always, when we adopt some policies, we're often rescinding some others, so these, I'm assuming these recisions are, are all policies that we've just adopted a newer version of, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
So unless there's any questions or comments, I'll accept a, a motion to rescind policies four oh five, four fourteen, four nineteen, six twenty-four, seven oh seven, five fifteen, and two oh six.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments on these rescinded policies? Hearing none, we have a motion in a second to rescind the stated policies. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And so then we have some policies for first reading. Again, I don't have names in front of me, Todd, would you mind?
Yep. Five oh two, I'm sorry, four twelve is travel guidelines for expense reimbursement policy. That's what Deb was just talking about, so we have the same reimbursement across the district. Five twenty-one, student disability non-discrimination, again, that's a boiler policy that we have to have to be in compliance. Pledge of allegiance policy, again, more language change is just a, it's the same policy, just some language changes that are in there. And then transportation safety, that went through the transportation department, and we went through it and made sure that all the terminology was the same, and that was the point that Deb made with type three vehicles does include buses as well as the other ones. So they're, they're ready to go for their first reading.
Questions or comments on these policies? I have one comment about the pledge of allegiance policy. What I find interesting is that in my time on the board, I have on multiple occasions been, had a member of the community come up to me and ask me why we do not say the pledge of allegiance in our schools, when in fact, we do say the pledge of allegiance in all of our schools in the district. It's a, I think, a commentary on, on how often the public perception of what goes on in the schools is very different than what's actually going on in our schools, and so it highlights, for me, the job of communication that we, we need to do. I have no actual comment on the policy, I think it's fun policy, but it brings up an interesting point for me. Other questions or comments?
How does that work? It says everybody has to say it once a week? At the high school level, who monitors that every student is saying it once a week?
Who knows that answer?
Ken might know it.
I was gonna say.
At the high school, every Monday morning, as soon as the announcements to the students are done, they go right into the pledge of allegiance after that. So, I mean, that takes place in all classrooms.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the policies? Hearing none. We'll move straight to item number eight. Finance committee.
Whoa, whoa, there's a discussion.
Got a couple of policies we wanted to talk about.
Oh, sorry, yeah. I thought that might be redundant over what we just had, but it's not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
They're just brief policies that we want to talk about. The first one, I don't know if you can pop it up or not, is the search of student lockers, desks, and personnel, personal possessions. And the piece that we wanted to get some feedback from was, oh. This might be the new one. Patient with this new system that we have here.
Yeah, where's the old one?
Yeah, on five oh two, do you remember where it was located, though? I can, let me just read it. It's, the piece that we wanted to check on was if further searches needed, the location of the search was to go to the police department. We were supposed to take the student down to the police department. We, and we'd like some feedback from you, too. We talked to the liaison officers, and they thought it might be better to say, if further search is needed, the location of the search will be determined by law enforcement personnel. This is regarding a strip search, if there had to be a strip search. Rather than having to worry about taking the student downtown, and with that time lapse, a lot of things can happen. The police department felt that they would be, could be a lot more flexible if we were to, were to, the location of the search will be determined by law enforcement personnel at that time. So, and I don't know if you have feedback, I know that the policy committee wanted us to take a look at that and then present it to the board, but it's part of the, of the guidelines that we have within the policy.
So to make sure I understand, Todd, what you're saying is the policy as it came to us, I'm assuming from MSBA, has this language that says the student shall go to the.
Determined by law enforcement personnel.
Right, but originally it had, had a statement to the effect of going to, to, to the police station?
Yes, that was, it was, yep.
And we would prefer perhaps having it determined by the, the law enforcement personnel.
Part of the concern was said, will be transported to law enforcement center, and we're saying, who's going to transport this person? And that was a real concern for the policy committee.
Yep, thanks. So I think the language addresses that piece of it when they put it in there, so. And we'll, we'll bring it back to the policy committee, but I wanted, we wanted to have feedback from the board, so they understood it. And whenever you talk about strip searches, it gets to be a little bit testy anyway, so. Okay. So that was the first one, and then we talked about policy three oh eight, which was the evaluation of administrators and directors from the, basically the superintendent. And we do have a new evaluation system that I showed the policy committee. It's really not a change in the policy itself, it's the actual tool that we're using for the assessment. There's a lot of, not a lot, but there's some latitude within the policy that allows me to use an instrument that would evaluate principles effectively. And the instrument we've chosen is actually, is electronic, but it stems from the state's research of how to evaluate a principle effectively. And we've made some tweaks throughout the whole process with the evaluation, and I think it's a good tool that we're using right now, but you did have an older tool that was in the policy as a guideline, and I would just, again, this is discussion, would just assume eliminate that and then use the tool that I've adopted for our principles now. And if you want to see that tool, I can certainly show it to you, but I did show the policy committee, it's, it's a, it's a nice tool. So that's all that is.
So, Todd, to, to make sure I understand, the evaluation instrument that I see in the board packet is the, the one that you're proposing to use, not the one that was originally attached to the policy?
Nope, the one in the board packet is actually the original, so that would be the one that I would say we're not going to use. Yep, the new one is electronic. Actually, it's two, there's, it's, there, there is a paper product for that, too, I can bring that to the policy committee as well. But we've transferred it on to an electronic evaluation tool. It's the same thing as paper is, not this paper, but the same thing that the Principal's Association, the Superintendent's Association, and the School Boards Association has adopted, but we just made it electronic. So the one that you have in the packet is the one that I will not use, if you're okay with that.
I have a question, Mr. Chair, if I may, please. Todd, have you, and I guess it might be in the packet, but is there a definition of what constitutes exemplar, proficient, developing, and honest factors?
Not yet, but that's our next step, is our rubric that we're going to create, we've already presented that information to the, the software company, and we want to put that, within that whole framework, but we're working on that, so that'll be the next step, that we have to define what those pieces are. Yep, not quite there yet. But by the next policy committee, we should have something in place and ready to go. And if you have some feedback, or if you have some resources I could use, that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, the other thing I asked the policy committee with this would be. Yeah, the other thing I asked the policy committee with this would be if there's sixty type of an evaluation. I'm wondering if that's still under consideration. Will you get input from staff, peers, and superior yourself?
Yeah, and as I read through the policy that's included in there, and I still intend to use that piece of it through the evaluation part, yes, I do.
It's important to note that, uh, you know, the last legislative session passed a law which says that, you know, there will be, um, principal evaluations, so I'm assuming this is gonna comply with that statute as well.
We, it changes all the time, so this is a pretty dynamic piece of, um, software that we have. It incorporated what last year has and we're changing to whatever the legislation's gonna be this year. We're keeping our fingers crossed, quite honestly, that they're not gonna put the testing in here, because that's gonna be very, very difficult to determine, and I don't know how that model's gonna work. But yeah, it'll, it'll be in compliance with what the legislation has.
Thank you. All right, other questions or comments for Tom and Deb on these two policies? All right, hearing none. We will move on to agenda item, uh, eight.
Which is finance?
Yes.
Which is finance. I was getting there, James. To make a few notes, uh, starting with, uh, item eight, the minutes, uh, report by our esteemed and ready-to-go treasurer.
Um, I'd say when I started in the treasurer position, uh, finance committee meetings were intended to be one hour. We had a little bit of trouble fitting it into an hour, so we said, well, let's make them an hour and a half. And now we're having trouble fitting them into an hour and a half. And I hope it's not, the work fulfills the amount of time allotted to it. But, um, we do have very substantive agendas and a lot of material to go over, so it's a hard-working committee. And we can just start going through the additional items on the agenda, and I think we'll cover everything mentioned in the minutes.
All right. Uh, moving right along then to item eight B, uh, starting with item number one.
That's the Twenty First Century Income Contract, and I think Ruth Ann Collins is here to speak to that. I appreciate her coming out in the evening.
Good evening. The Twenty First Century Community Learning Center's contract that is noted in your minutes is with Minnesota State University's Mankato. They have been our research partner as a third-party evaluation partner with this grant since we started in two thousand and four. So it's been a very good partnership that we've had, and we have modified the agreement this year because we do have, uh, a data system online that we don't need their help with for gathering our data. But what we're doing instead is, with this partnership, reviewing the data that we have collected and looking at the, um, looking at the developments that the students have had over the years that this grant has been in place. So as a third-party, um, research partner, that is also a requirement of the Twenty First Century Community Learning Center's grant, is to have that, that party in place, so. And I think the amount too is reflected, should be a part of the packet. Over the eight years, the amount has not changed. And it is all paid through the Twenty First Century Community Learning Center's grant.
I was getting a bit of my question. The forty-five hundred dollars is included in the research, or in the, um, Twenty First Century grant?
Yes, it is, yes.
Other questions for Ruth Ann?
Finance committee recommended approval.
Ruth Ann, I have.
I'm not gonna say that for everything. We can, we recommend approval of everything you see before.
Um, Ruth Ann, I had another quick question, I think quick question. Um, uh, this is a grant, and so how, um, how long do we have the grant for? And is there the option to renew it?
Yes and yes, and five years. We have, the grant started, um, in two thousand and nine. It will expire in two thousand and thirteen. And the parameters of the grant are after the first three years, the money does not roll over. It's a spend-down year. And then through non-competitive, um, grant completion, we get to renew the last two years of the grant, which is, it's automatic. But again, like with all grants, you have to demonstrate performance. Again, enter into our partnership with MSU, MNSU, Mankato. They help us to, to complete that component. So upon the year two thousand and thirteen, we will get the opportunity, they, they will start another cohort based on No Child Left Behind Title IV Part B. If the federal government feels at that time that putting the monies into the Twenty First CCLC grant allocations is appropriate and Minnesota receives it, there will be another opportunity within the state of Minnesota to apply. Now, it's up to the school di- it's up to the school district to decide if they want to go ahead and complete the application.
Great, thank you, Ruth Ann. That's exactly what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ruth Ann? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the twenty-four, Twenty First Century Grant Program Income Contract between, uh, Minnesota State University Mankato and Faribault Public Schools.
So moved.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Ruth Ann, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, I was just gonna say, thank you.
All right, um, I have a motion in a second. Uh, all those in favor, uh, of approval signify by saying aye. Oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ruth Ann.
Thanks, Ruth Ann.
All right, uh, item eight B two on the agenda. Consider approval of Faribault Public Schools' technology plan.
I'm requesting approval of the treasure technology plan. And to be eligible for the RAG and Talk Communication A districts, we've established a proof technology plan on file with the Department of Education. And our plan outlines our needs and goals in areas of technology over the next three years. And I want to thank and acknowledge our technology committee and their, their help in developing this plan. Um, there are four major components that are required for this tech plan. There's a technology needs assessment, um, goals and strategies, professional development and evaluation. And we did a technology needs assessment assessment in our, we administered, uh, surveys to our staff and students. Um, we received feedback from our stakeholders and building technology committees. We also did an inventory of our infrastructure and computer equipment. And based on that needs assessment, the committee did establish eight goal areas, eight goal areas, and, um, developed strategies for achieving these goals. And, uh, it, it also requires a professional development plan for our staff. And, um, we continue to research and establish new, um, opportunities to make staff comfortable with technology on the classroom and with teaching technology to our students. And also, um, there's an ongoing evaluation of the plan where, um, the tech committee will continue to meet monthly to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students and staff with our technology.
Thank you, Marie. Questions or comments for Maria?
It's been another of my many privileges in working with this district and for this district, to have worked with Maria for a number of years. Done outstanding things to support the use of technology in our system. Uh, I have a question regarding the evaluation section on page twelve. It's numbered as page twelve in my packet. And I quote, "Success of the plan will be reflected on the results achieved by students on state testing of MCA two, MCA three, and grad tests." And, um, I would li- recognizing that in the past, our student achievement vision in this district uh, stated that we were looking at test results, our new vision that is up for adoption uh, reflects a wider view of student achievement. And I'm, would like to be sure that the use of technology in our system, uh, is connected with that wider vision of student achievement than just test results. Visions of literacy, uh, communication skills, all those sorts of things. So I would like to see that an evaluation of our technology plan include, you know, those other areas of student achievement that are, in my opinion, above and beyond just test results. So, um, I, I'm not intending this as a criticism. I'm, I guess it's just a question that I would like to see as the district moves, moves forward, everything that we do is done in light of our wider vision of student achievement. And the, if, after reading through the, 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 the plan, this struck me as related to an old vision. And we're been working to try and, um, update that, revise it, perhaps expand it, if I, I'll describe it that way. So that would be a concern of mine.
Other questions or comments? Reactions to Tom's statement? Um, I guess, uh, on his face, I, I, not having a bigger picture here, but, uh, uh, reading that same statement, I would echo what Tom has said. Um, I don't know if there's a way to s- you know, I think a simple statement, something that, that, that this will be, uh, uh, results achieved by students as reflected in, um, in the strategic plan would almost suffice to, to make sure that it reflects the work that we've done on the strategic plan, um, as a, as a simple way to address what I think are Tom's very valid concerns.
Yeah, I think if, if the decision's being made, the, the, you know, the program's being put in place, the equipment that's being supported and so on, has reflected, I think, a wider vision, but I wanna, I guess I'm trying to get it down in black and white and make it part of the culture of this district, that everything we do, every decision we spend, every dollar, or every decision we make and every dollar we spend is re- is aimed at the widest possible, um, and greatest possible, uh, support of student achievement in all its varieties, not just test results.
Um, so, so given that, uh, is there, is it easy for us to make a simple change to that?
Have we sent it in yet? Have we sent it in yet?
Yeah, we've sent it in.
Yeah, then, then we can make the change.
So if the board wanted to suggest then a, a, a small amendment to this, we could do so at this time and, and then, uh, um, what we would adopt at this time would be what Maria would send in as the technology plan, um, if that's how we wanted to.
Make a motion to accept the plan subject to the revision proposed by Mr. Casper.
So do you want to give us some ver- I'm sorry, go ahead, second.
Well, I, I, I liked what Jason suggested here a few moments ago, that success.
Wait, one second. I need a second, I think, to the motion, and then we can discuss.
I started, sorry.
Formal protocol. Is there a second to Jason's, a second to the motions?
And, and I would suggest, this is just off the top of my head, but some, based on what Jason had said earlier, that the success of this plan be reflected on adjol- as results achieved by students as, uh, described in our strategic vision. And then, as that vision has been stated and presented and will be adopted formally at some point here, then that's how we would evaluate the success of the technology plan.
So we could leave the sentence as is, uh, up until achieved by students, um, as, you, you had a good phrasing of it, Tom, and now I can.
Uh, said as, achieved by students reflective of our strategic vision.
Kathy has it. Would you have Kathy?
What do you have, Kathy?
Well, I had written down as described in our strategic plan, but.
Either way.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Is that okay, Maria? All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Maria. All right, so, uh, we have, uh, a, a small correction to the, to the plan in front of you. Um, any other questions or comments about this plan? All right, hearing none. We have a motion and a second, so all those in favor of adopting, uh, the, uh, technology plan as slightly amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Maria. All right, we will move along to item eight B, Part Three, the integration budget.
Good evening. Uh, there's two parts to this. There's the budget sheets and then there's the narrative. I'm not sure if you can see them both at the same time. So I'm not sure how you wanna go through this, but I'll just make some comments on the front page of the budget. You see the total we're requesting this year is five hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. That is an increase of, over last year by seventy-one thousand plus dollars based on, um, our projected student enrollment of four hundred and, uh, four thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven students times one hundred and twenty-nine dollars each. So that's where the money comes from. It's based on seventy percent state dollars and thirty percent local levy. So you will be approving that total amount if you approve this plan. The first goal has not changed dramatically from last year's, if you remember. Um, that is our goal one with the collaborative and the, the, the reading has changed, or the words have changed a little bit. Um, we will increase and sustain interracial contacts between the students from Jefferson Elementary School in Faribault and the elementary students from the W E M district. And that is an inter-district goal, which is what the state is looking for, inter-district collaboration between us and Waterville. Uh, we are adding one additional meeting between the students next year. Um, we did two already this year. We're doing a third one. And then next year, we're gonna add a fourth one, which is going to be, uh, a kindness retreat that's based on the, the same people that come in and do the respect retreat and the, uh, the courage retreat and other, um, buildings. They're going to do the kindness retreat in grades four and five. And then there's a kindness assembly for the third graders. So we'll get our, the third graders from both districts together, fourth and fifth graders together at, at a mutual site. Any questions on goal one? Goal two is broken up into some, um, sub-goals, and the first one is the Abbott program. And you will see that a majority of our budget is in the Abbott, um, budget. We are, um, adding two classes next year. We're going to go to seventh grade and into ninth grade. We had the eighth grade this year and we had, started with thirty students, um, in the Abbott elective class. We are down to twenty-one, but we will be adding so that class will be at least thirty students when they move to the high school. A lot of the Abbott budget goes to staff development because of the training that is required by the Abbott, um, program. Any questions on Abbott? The two point two is our high school, uh, uh, social studies class that we started last summer. We continued that through this academic year. We had a class each of the two semesters so far this year, and we will again be offering that in the summer for students based on the criteria that we have established. And we're targeting students who are, 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 the reading scores on math scores and MCA scores, and we're trying to find the kids that are kind of on the bubble so that we can give them a boost over the summer. Uh, two point two, or two point three of that goal is our after-school programming. There's really no change to that goal. We have a very active program at both the high school and the middle school, two nights a week after school. Goal three is the staff development opportunities. Um, we're going to, we've contracted with a speaker from the Abbott program, and he's going to be addressing our staff and our, is it the PBS schools?
Yes.
We're going to invite them, and he will be speaking the Wednesday of workshop week. And a couple of us had the advantage of hearing him speak at the national conference in, um, December, and we're very impressed with his message.
And we invite the board members too to come.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So we'll be, you know, you'll get more information about that. So that's one piece of the staff development. The other is, um, the apps and narratives. We're gonna continue to work on getting people to attend that. The other is the apps and narratives, we're gonna continue to work on getting people to attend that workshop. We had six people attend last week and came back with some positive comments, so we're gonna try and increase that with some other staff in our district. Um, let's see. Goal four is the artist in residence program. We have that scheduled for this year. We're doing a program, or a, it's mixed blood theaters coming again this year, they're doing Hijab Two. And we'll see how that performance is going to be at the high school and the middle school on April twenty seventh, I believe it is. So, if you're interested in seeing one of those, they're gonna do three performances total that day. If you're interested, that would be an interesting thing to see. Our other four point two is our college ambitions, start today, is our CAS program. That kind of ties into the Northfield Torch Program of identifying students who traditionally don't stay in school and don't graduate. So, we're targeting that population, and we've got a real active group going at the high school and trying to keep them in school and being successful. A lot of it is college, getting ready for college and access to college, how do you get into college and that kind of thing. What we've added this year that is different than last year is the Parent Institute for Quality Education. If you notice, we did drop the Rosetta Stone piece, and we're going to use about the same amount of money for the Parent Institute. A number of districts that are getting integration funds throughout the metro area have used this program, and they come in and train facilitators to work with our families, to keep them and help them be engaged in our schools, so they also know what it takes to make students successful, and they can help us with that process. So, we would, we'll train facilitators, and they come in and do the training. And we would probably do an English-speaking group, a Somali-speaking group, and a Spanish-speaking group. They, all their materials are in different languages, and we'll be able to access those. Goal five has not changed, that is continues to be the cultural liaison that we have in our district, and the integration plan, or the integration budget pays for parts of those hours. Uh, any questions?
Questions?
No comments?
All right, hearing no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen integration budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye, sorry.
I was just gonna make a comment, thanks to Cheryl for putting this together, it's a, it's an enormous grant and a lot of work, and she put a lot of time into this whole thing, I just wanna commend her on it, it was very, very good work.
And also Andy Lyles, she does the budget sheets.
Yep.
And I wouldn't be able to do that.
Sorry.
Just a comment too, if I may, be prepared for real scrutiny on any of these grants this year.
I don't, you know, they did not approve ours last year after we-
And probably have more scrutiny going through this year than you have in the past.
Right.
I have heard of the legislature that they're possibly including Abbott in an innovation slash integration grant. You know how they're changing that whole piece, Abbott could be a component of that legislatively too, so.
That was, yeah, the, the integration task force specifically recommended money going to the Abbott program throughout the state. So, I'm hoping that does get approved like last year. And just re, you know, Abbott is really spreading throughout the state of Minnesota, so we're lucky we have that piece.
There's also one area here that I didn't see addressed to any great degree, and that's early literacy and numeracy for integration plans. Even though that's not, it's not authorized right now, it probably will in the future.
And we certainly could add a piece if we needed to. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, wait, did we vote yet?
No.
We had a motion and a second, and then some questions and comments. All right, so I have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen integration budget. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, moving along to item, uh, eight B four, consider approval of a purchase of services for a school psychologist.
If you have questions for Cheryl, you can certainly ask it, but it did go through the finance committee, she proposed it, so. Do you have questions for Cheryl with regard to this position? We're recommending approval for the psychologist.
It's on an ad nee- as needed basis, right?
Right, it's an hourly rate, and it would be a, a purchase of service, we're not hiring the person. I was able to locate someone locally that, that has, that's already working in Northfield to purchase service from them for the hours that we need.
Again, Cheryl, we're so swamped with our regular people, or what?
We are, we are, they are working very, very hard. We have an increase in numbers of referrals for evaluation for special education, as well as just the reevaluations that are, that are a high number for the number of people that we have.
So, it is, should the motion include not to exceed twelve thousand dollars, or, how do you want that, Maria?
I, I think that's okay, because I was able to, to, the cost of, of this individual to contract the services instead of hiring someone is about half the cost.
Okay, is this person a current employee of the Northfield schools?
Yes.
And they've got that flexibility to sell that time?
Yes, they are part-time, uh, employee.
So, they're probably glad to see the knocking on their door after the person.
I would think so.
And then who's paying for this?
Well, the special education funds, um, the funds come from the case facilitator that we did not hire at the beginning of the school year. Uh, we hired a teacher to do part of the, that evaluation time, uh, and, um, so there is, there are funds left over for that.
Any other questions or comments for Cheryl? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the purchases of services for a school psychologist, uh, not to exceed twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, moving along to item eight B five, consider approval to hire E B D paraprofessional at the C R E C. Cheryl.
There is an increased need for a paraprofessional, actually for a student that, that comes from Northfield. That was this decision by the Northfield, uh, Northfield I E P team in conjunction with the team at the C R E C that serves the student. Because that decision was made by Northfield, they are, they will be paying for that position. Because we host the program, we've hired the, the individual, that's why it needs to come before you, because that will be, come before you for the consent agenda to hire the person.
Right, questions or comments for Cheryl?
Who have approval?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the hire of an E B D paraprofessional at the C R E C signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chai recommends we take the next items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven with, we can comment on each one, but we take a single vote for action on them. They're all masonry.
I had no objections to that, anybody think of a reason why formality indicated us not to do that? Any objections from other board members? All right, so we'll act on these as a single item. Kevin, come on up and tell us about these, thank you.
The next six items on the agenda are for exterior wall repair, masonry restoration on six of our sites, that being Jefferson, Lincoln, Near Strand, Roosevelt High School, and the A L C building. They're all out of the bond, bond proceeds for deferred maintenance. That budget is approximately one point two million. Um, I've used some of that money on some other projects as I put them together, as it made sense to do some of that. So, we have one point two five four million left for these projects. These six projects, a couple of them came in over, the rest came in under. Um, like you say, we had one point two million, these came in at six hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two. I'll go through each one as we go through. I did add up some other contractors, um, you know, Richard had a good question during the finance committee about why so low on this one. Another contractor bid them all out at about nine hundred thousand. We did have one that was sight unseen, he did bid it at one point six million, so. Uh, the economy's got a lot to do with the cheap pricing, or the, the, uh, great pricing we did receive here. Um, as you go through here, you will see that, um, two contractors got a little bid on all of these, and it's actually two local contractors. With that, I will start with Jefferson Elementary. We had a little bid from MedCon for a hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars for that project. Lincoln Elementary School, we had a little bid with the base bid and alternate one for a hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred dollars, that also was MedCon. The third one is Near Strand Elementary Schools, and Scott, maybe you want. Um, Restoration Services Inc. got that, there is a little bid at forty thousand, five fifty-two, going with alternate one. And the next one is Roosevelt Elementary School, base bid plus alternate two. Um, went to Restoration Services Inc. for a total of fifty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty for Roosevelt. And then high school, um, base bid at alternate A one and A three, at a hundred, or a hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars. And then area learning center with the base bid plus alternate one, gave us a bid of fifty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety. Once again, the total was six hundred, for all six bids, was six hundred and sixty, six hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two. Any questions on any of the bids?
Kevin, maybe you can explain, I, um, Jimmy, James and I, if you heard it, sorry, that, um, of the first bid, uh, restoration, wrong bid, could you explain to the rest of the board?
Oh, and the package of wrong bid? When he turned in his bid for that project, um, he had stuffed the wrong paperwork in, so he didn't have the right paperwork in the bid.
So, it's really precise, that's why I'm trying to get that, when you open these bids up, it has to be to the second with the right bid.
Oh, and bid closing's over, it is over. We bid these in six different sessions, two different days, one o'clock, two o'clock, and three o'clock. We put the time of my clock up at one o'clock, I announce it, it's over, if they walk in five seconds late, one second late, they're thrown out, we don't even open them. This bid, unfortunately, um, as we did open it, it was correctly labeled on the outside, but he had the wrong paperwork on the inside. He bid all the projects and he, unfortunately, he said, he stuffed it wrong. He had the other pack in the truck, but he couldn't bring it in, rules rule, so. So, with that, any questions on any of the six projects, like you said, they're all out of bond projects, proceeds that we have from the bond project?
Kevin, I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm not sure I understand, under the, on, on the memorandums for each of these, this is, lists the, uh, the bid bond, and everything has an X by it, uh, except for Restoration Services has a few C Ks by them, I don't know what that means.
Check, cashier's check, in lieu of getting a bid bond, you can also provide a five percent cashier's check. And that's what that is, you did follow the proper procedures, and some of them do present a check.
Just a different way of doing things.
Yes.
I didn't know what that meant, thank you very much.
Question?
Thanks, Cheryl.
So, if I take a look at the one on Roosevelt Elementary School, you really have to read the base bid, alternate one, alternate two, come onto the total bid, right?
Roosevelt, alternate one, we aren't accepting alternate one, we are accepting base bid, I'm asking you to accept base bid plus alternate two. Alternate one is a partial seal coat of the entire brick built, of the building, alternate two is sealing the entire building with a cement sealer.
So, in order to get the low bid, you've got-
If, if everything's based off of base bid.
MedCon has thirty-four thousand Restoration Services as eighteen, but you have to add alternate two also to come up with a low bid?
Yes.
So, it's eighteen plus thirty-six?
Correct.
And thirty-four plus twenty-nine?
Correct.
What are the unit prices?
Unit pricing, um, ooh, I didn't write them down, any brick, bricks? I know it's, one is brick pricing, the other is... We put them in there because in the specifications, we call for replacing so many brick, they have to replace more, we'll know what it is per unit. And one is square foot, tuck point, cutting out the seams. So, and if they drastically see a reduction in the number, then we get the money back. It's to know ahead of time, in case we run into issues, we already know our cost per, per school, per square foot, or per lineal foot, or per brick. That protects us, in case something gets way out of whack, we will know what our price is, so they can't just say, oh, we're here anyway, and we're gonna really put it to you.
I know we're subject to the bidding law, but it's nice to see a local company do a couple of bids in this whole process.
I was very pleased to see that they, they really stepped up this time, and gave us some really good numbers.
I was gonna say the same thing, I often get asked, we, earlier I talked about the pledge of allegiance, I also often get asked about why we don't give bids to local companies, and, and as you know, Kevin, this is about bid laws, and, and we're, our hands are pretty tied about who we can give bids to, and it's all based upon the lowest price, and so I, I echo what Jerry said. It's, it's nice to see local companies able to get those bids, that's what, what I think most of us would prefer to. Other questions or comments for, for Kevin?
This is all worked as scheduled for this summer, it started after school is out.
I will entertain a motion then to approve items eight B six through eleven, which are all masonry restorations on various buildings throughout the district.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, jumping down to item eight B twelve, consider approval for the professional design proposal for Fairville High School Fitness Center. Kevin?
Thank you. To start this process, we already approved the name, name for it. Um, and shortly, under eight C dash three, you will have a donation approval for the Booster Club donating money to get the process started, to cover this expenditure as you approve this. So, with that, I N S Group has been working closely with Booster Club for several months now, doing renderings and everything else. We went to them and asked them for a price, what it would cost for, uh, entering, entering into professional design of this, all the way through to final completion. With that, they gave us a price of twenty-five thousand, three hundred, and then construction administration of four thousand. That percentage of total estimated construction pricing is, estimated construction's at four hundred thousand, that puts it at six point three two five percent. In all the years I've worked, uh, we are seeing low percentages, this is a good number, we have paid upwards of twelve, fifteen percent in the past on some projects, so. It's been a smaller project, um, and with the individuals involved with everything, um, six point three two five percent, I feel is a really good number for us. So, with that, I ask for approval to hire I N S Group to do, enter in contact for design, all the way through construction.
Thank you, Kevin, and just to make sure that we clarify, um, the, the funding for this, uh, this, uh, for this and for all parts of the fitness center first come to us, and then we use the funds that are given to us to pay for these services. We're paying for them as we are fiscal hosts, but we're receiving the funds from the Booster Club prior to, to spending this, so.
You are correct, and that money was deposited in the School of Commerce late last week, Thursday or Friday, I believe.
Thank you, other questions or comments?
When do you expect, you know, start digging footings?
We're excited to start, possibly in June. We're gonna fast-track this, once approved tonight, we're gonna get moving on it right away. Um, I say they've done a lot of work already ahead of time, uh, with the Booster Club over the last year. Um, we're hoping breaking ground as soon as school's out. Provided money's put in the account, if it's getting good. Um, there's a few contractors really hungry for this project, so I, I do feel we're gonna get some really good pricing to go up for this, you have this here.
I would feel you probably have a couple of local companies that'll be very anxious to participate in this project.
I would imagine so, yes.
Other questions for, for Kevin on this?
Just, what, when is the anticipate, if we're able to start, when you hope to, when would be the- Just, when is the anticipate, if we're able to start, when you hope to, when would be the anticipated completion?
I know when we had a meeting, we really talked about it'd be nice to have it before fall sports starts, um, depending on the weather. How bad are we gonna pay for this drugs bill, we're in, is it gonna rain all summer or are we gonna get it all in the snow the next couple of weeks, I don't know. It's all weather dependent when you do something like this, but, um, we're really hopeful that, um, by fall if we have no rain.
I, I, we don't wanna get everybody's hopes up too high, cause we still have that financial thing that we have to count on and that's kind of out of our control, but it's, we wanna be optimistic so we can, but I wanna make sure that we, we don't necessarily guarantee that.
They are very hopeful to have the funds ready in time, so that we can break ground on that, but. Well, nice and thank.
Other questions or comments for Kevin? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion, uh, to approve, uh, professional design proposal for Faribault High School Fitness Center.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, I have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Just one clarification, does that mean INS is our architect? That's what the implication is, is that we're using INS on it?
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, uh, all those, uh, in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, uh, last item under finance, eight B thirteen. Consider approval of resolution, resolution twelve oh one directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore.
I think you've gone through this before, if I'm not mistaken, you've just given us permission to give you recommendations on where those reductions would be and then of course you act on them as you see fit.
Is there a need in this resolution to specify an amount or is the informal discussion we had at the?
Yeah, I think you wanna leave the amount out right now, we can have a discussion, but March fifth will be the time that you actually set those dollar amounts for us.
It says required by the state, I believe you said, too. However, I should point out that it was not unanimous, Richie, I mean, Mr. Olson.
Could hear that comment.
We do have fun on this side of the table.
Other questions or comments on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to, uh, approve the resolution twelve oh one directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore, just to clarify for anybody watching at this point. Uh, this is to ask, uh, the administration to bring recommendations to the board so that we might have them for discussion purposes. It's not at this point making any cuts, um, it's, it's trying to prepare for that process that we anticipate. Other comments before we vote? Roll call on this vote.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Jason Inglebry?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jerry Roach, aye, James Wolfe?
Aye.
Motion passes five to one.
All right. Uh, next item on the agenda. Eight B one, the enrollment report.
The enrollments as of February first, you can see are entered on the sheet that you see every month. You'll notice that we did drop down significantly, forty-one students K through twelve, the ALC stayed the same. Um, this is not unusual for us to see a drop in, from January to February. However, it is unusual for us to see this large of a drop, generally we drop this many kids for the rest of the year, not in one month, but. Uh, we did look at the data on it and it was just a variety of reasons, we had students move to another district in the state, we had students move to another state, we had students leave to go to another country. We had some early graduates, we had, uh, I think a pretty high number, I remember I had kids that just didn't show up after winter break. And we have to drop them after fifteen days and just no, no word from them as to where they went or where they are. So, it's unfortunate, but hopefully we don't lose them anymore the rest of the year.
Questions for calling?
When will you know the next count?
The, we take it the first of every month.
First, okay, thank you.
Just a note too, um, February's numbers from last year to this year, I just did grades four through twelve, I didn't, for some reason didn't do the K three, but four, five lost, eleven students from last year to this year. Middle school, six through eight gained forty students from last year to this year, and the high school lost seven students from last year to this year. So, when you're looking at reductions, um, it's, the reductions are not due to the attrition, this time it's the, the funding issue.
Okay.
I have a question, sorry.
Yes?
Is there any way possible for our work session, can we get March's numbers?
Um, yes, yep, but I usually get that right away in March to the second, so, yep, I can bring that to the work session.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, other questions for Colleen on the enrollment? We'll move on, then to the financial, oh, sorry, Tom, go ahead.
As, um, at what point will we have a projection for next year? And I realize that that is an inexact science and all that sort of thing, but at what point? We have, um, subtotal of thirty-six seventy listed here, um, in the projected column. When would we get that figure for next year?
We did talk about that at the work session in February, and we, remember we went over that whole packet of financial information and we had all the enrollments in there for the next five years.
Right, but I'm assuming that there will be a calculation being made, you know, based on more recent data, so.
No.
We already have a projection for next year?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, the rest of the year, it just slows down and that's been factored into the projections for next year already.
Okay, so we're not collecting other information on an ongoing basis that might modify that number?
The only thing that would modify it is if we had a significant difference at the end of the year, other than what we planned for.
Okay.
So if we had a huge influx of kids, we'd have to find out why, and if we were going to sustain them, then we could factor that in, or if we had a huge decrease, again, we'd have to figure out why that happened and is that going to continue? But, um, no, we've already projected forward for this year.
Right, no, I, I recall the discussion that we had over that, of that, those predictions, I was just not sure if that was going to be a, a modified number that would come out at some point, a little, but not understanding.
Yep, not right now, you know, the June.
After the end of the school year, if there was some significant change.
If there was significant change, the other, the next time we look at it is in the fall after our October one enrollment. That's when we take another look at it again, because then you've got, you're a month into school, everybody who's going to show up should've showed up by then, we've got registrations, so that's really the next best time to look at enrollment for next year.
Other questions? Before I try to move on? All right, hearing none, uh, we'll move on to item, uh, eight C two, the financial report.
We looked that over at the finance committee, I don't think there was anything.
Questions or comments? All right. Um, moving all right along then, eight, item eight C three, uh, acceptance of gifts and donations, there were none at the time that the online packet uh, was presented, I think that's right, but, uh, when you arrived tonight, there should've been a sheet of paper with a few that have come in, um.
Actually, there was just one added on.
Yep, just number three added.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, okay, so we have one item added on, the fitness, and it's the fitness center that was added on. Okay, excellent. All right, um, any questions or comments on the gifts? All right, well, I would like to just make sure that we publicly acknowledge, uh, these gifts. Item number one on this, uh, list is, uh, the Riverbend Nature Center groomed the cross-country ski trails at the Faribault Middle School for the eighth grade physical education students. Uh, the middle school, uh, physical education teachers sent a personal letter of thanks. Middle school students, families, and staff collected Fedora hat symbols off of Godfather pizza boxes which were turned into Godfathers pizza. Uh, the middle school received thirty dollars and twenty-five cents from Godfathers, uh, which we used to, uh, purchase student prizes for SOARs. Stay safe, own our school, act responsibly, and respect everyone, that program. Um, and then finally, the Faribault Booster Club, uh, um, donated twenty-nine thousand three hundred dollars, uh, to cover the fees um, for the, uh, engineering work on the fitness center that we just approved. Any other questions on behalf of the board? I think we all say thank you to those, uh, uh, groups and community members who have worked hard to, uh, um, add to our district. Uh, any other questions or comments?
I just wanna point out that they ate a lot of pizza, cause those symbols are only worth a quarter. That's a lot of pizza.
A hundred and twenty-one pizzas to make that. A lot of pizza, it's true.
Well, considering the age, it probably isn't.
Not a lot for middle schoolers. Any other questions or comments on these gifts? All right, I will entertain, uh, a motion to, uh, accept these donations.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve, uh, the acceptance of these gifts as reported, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, item eight, C four, consider approval of resolution twelve oh two authorizing, authorizing the approval of the sale of general obligation alternative facilities refunding bonds series twenty twelve B. Would you like to tell us what that means?
I sure can, we have five bond issues that we're making payments on, very similar to what a homeowner might think of as their mortgage payment, so we're making those payments twice a year typically on all those issues. Our financial consultants, elders and associates monitor those bond repayments and the bond market, and when they have an opportunity, when they see an opportunity for us to refinance those bonds, they let us know, so this is a, a time now when we are able to refinance one of our issues. Actually, two of our issues, we're gonna do two issues with this one. So it's just like refinancing your mortgage at home, when you see lower interest rates, you take that opportunity, when it makes sense, and when you can save some money. So by selling these new bonds, we'll be paying off the old issues with the fine, with the proceeds and we'll save about four hundred and fifty thousand over the remaining term of these bonds. And since we make these bond payments with tax dollars that come from our, our constituents, this will be a savings to, a tax savings to our community for those particular bond payments down the road.
All right, excellent. So as summary is, it may not sound exciting, but the sale of bonds saves our tax pay of half a million dollars.
Yes.
Excellent. Other questions or comments for Kevin? All right. Uh, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution twelve oh two.
So moved.
Second.
All right, uh, this, uh, requires a roll call.
Uh, Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Jason Inglebry?
Yes, aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jerry Roach, aye, James Wolfe?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you, uh, item eight C five. Uh, consider approval of resolution twelve oh three, authorizing the approval of the sale of aid anticipation certificates and tax anticipation certificates, uh, series twenty twelve.
I think we've talked about, uh, many times over the last couple of years, how districts are being forced to borrow money because of cash flow issues with the state withholding state aid payments. We've been fortunate, we've been able to make it through the last couple of years without borrowing, however, that is coming to an end. We actually will not have enough cash to make payments and payroll come May, so we are now being forced to borrow, which I told you that that would happen at some point and that time is here, so. We will be issuing four and a half million dollars in tax and aid anticipation certificates, basically we're borrowing against our future aid and our future tax payments that will come. Um, it will cost us probably about eleven thousand, twelve thousand dollars of interest, that's the good news. The rates on these are very low, they're anywhere from point two five percent to point four percent, so, um, that's a good rate, but it, you know, is money that we will have to pay. Part of the increase in the formula months last year was to help offset the cost of borrowing for districts, so. That's, I guess, a small trade-off for us.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion or questions? All right, this item requires a roll call.
James Wolfe?
Aye.
Jerry Roach, aye, Richard Olson?
Aye.
James Inglebry, Jason Inglebry?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. Uh, thank you, Colin. Um, other, uh, items, uh, other committee reports, item, uh, nine A, the insurance committee minutes, uh, do we have anybody to report on that?
Yes, I attended that at the district office, a lot of people, as you can see, attended that, basically, we have a very healthy staff. No large claims. Uh, but, oh, yeah, then somebody knocked on wood, Mr. Sessner knocked on wood on that. And we're trying to switch our members over to VIBA which helps them and helps the district. And they're having informational, uh, uh, sessions as stated in the minutes there, March sixth, March eighth, April tenth and April, uh, twelfth. To inform that it is a good deal for them and for us.
Any questions or comments from Richard on this item?
It is more educational that people are sort of happy with what they have, you know, comfortable, and they wanna take them out of their, educate them.
With the VIBA.
With the VIBA, right.
Yes. All right. Um, moving on to item nine B, Wellness Committee. We have minutes in front of us, is there a Wellness Committee member who would like to?
Well, I can, I can speak to that and James just chime in anytime, yep. We're just really formulating the, or re, reformulating the Wellness Committee and the structure, I we're trying to get a structure where we have a group of people that represent the Wellness Committee and then subcommittees would go out and work on different projects through the Wellness Committee rather than working independently. And it's just taken some time to get the committee formed, in fact, we do have a second meeting coming up, I think it's in your board agenda where, when that Wellness Committee is, at tomorrow night. So, we'll talk about that a little bit more, but we're making some progress with it and we're trying to formulate the committee to make it a little bit more efficient and fluid by organizing this larger Wellness Committee.
I will just note, not necessarily part of this committee, but, um, this Friday night is the Jefferson Family Fun Night and it's, uh, oriented if not completely largely toward healthy lifestyle, so there are gonna be a lot of things there encouraging exercise, movement, healthier eating and so forth.
I encourage everyone to come to that as I am married to the treasurer for the parent committee who's organizing it, so. They would appreciate everybody's attendance. Other questions for the Wellness Committee? All right then, we'll move on to item ten in the agenda. Other matters, we've already acted on item ten A, so we'll move on to item ten B. Consider approval of the twenty-eleven to thirteen, uh, Fairable Principal Association Master Agreement. Todd, do you wanna speak to that?
Yep, I'm just, uh, popping it up, and maybe, Colleen, do you wanna, do you have the document in front of you by chance? I have the, the details are in there, the whole entire package, the financial package, um, with all the different changes that are within the plan. I don't know how detailed you wanna get, but it's, uh, total compensation package is four point six seven percent over two years. And so I believe, again, staying under the, the teacher's percentage was kind of the goal that we had for the negotiations with the admin. It was a good negotiation session, we, I think that both sides agreed to it.
Questions or comments for Todd on this agreement? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a, a motion and a second to approve, uh, the twenty-eleven to thirteen Fairable Principal Association Master Agreement. Um, any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
Let's do a roll call.
Okay.
Mr. Kirk?
Tom? Casper? Deb Davis?
Aye.
Jason Engelbreit?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jerry Rovisho, aye. James Wolfe?
Aye.
Motion passes five to one.
All right. Um, item ten, C, uh, consider approval of the revised twenty-twelve thirteen strategic plan. So we have been looking at this, uh, for a little while now, we made summary visions to it. Um, and we got it to the board tonight to take action on it. Uh, the board has discussed this, uh, strategic plan at length, and if it, if, uh, if it is passed tonight, this will be posted, I'm assuming, online for members of the community to see in short order. So, well, we won't be discussing it at length tonight, I'm assuming, uh, um, any member of the community who would like to see it can find it online, uh, assuming that passes. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Right, we have a motion, uh, and a second to approve the revised twenty-twelve thirteen strategic plan. Any further questions or discussion?
Did it include these three proposed, uh?
Focus on student achievement. It did not include those proposals, and I didn't know if you wanted to take some time to discuss them?
Okay, well, I'll just say, this, that did not add anything to the list. It just, it, it provides various categories. I wanna make sure we know that we're all in agreement as to what we're gonna be measuring here, and what we have as just goals. Uh, because I think every quarter, every three month, every four months, we should have a report on how we're doing against these goals. Even though some of them, we only are gonna be able to measure annually, we should at least know what activities are going on. And I wanna get to the first report and say, well, I didn't think we were gonna try to measure citizens, citizenship skills. Uh, you know, half the board's saying, well, we are, and half, I don't know, do we all agree that that is, uh? I, I listed it with a lot of question marks as a non-measurable skill, um, suggested it. I don't have strong feelings one way or another, I just wanna make sure we're in agreement as to, you know, are we gonna get numbers on all of these, uh, items that we've listed here? And if not, we understand why we aren't.
Well, if I, if I could, uh, I have no problem with any of this, other than the non-measurable question mark that you have there. Because I, I think that communication skills, critical thinking skills, and citizenship skills are quite measurable. They've been, if they're included in our curriculum, they're being evaluated by our teachers on an ongoing basis. And, uh, we could get, now you say, are we gonna get numbers on them? Uh, numbers are appropriate for many measures, but I'm not sure that they are for all. But, uh, the fact that, uh, we had ninety-eight percent of our kids meet the graduation requirements, and those graduation requirements included performance of a variety of communication skills, uh, completion of projects that require critical thinking skills, uh, the study of and the practice of citizenship skills. I think we can certainly get, uh, measured, some measure of their accomplishment. Now, your last statement there of strong connection between student and adult, um, that one is, would be a really tough one to put a number on. But such measures as our graduation rate, such measures as our attendance, uh, would at least give us some indication that students are, have some sort of connection. Because it, it, in my experience and my years of teaching, that students who can connect with the system in one way, shape, or form with someone, whether that be their math teacher, or their science teacher, or their basketball coach, or whomever, uh, those are the kids that are going to be successful. The kids that are alienated, the kids that, uh, don't feel, um, connected with our school are the ones that, that stop coming, the ones that stop performing, the stud, the ones that stop achieving, at least in relationship to our school goals. So I think that those outcomes are measurable, whether you can put a number on it, may, is certainly debatable, but I think we have some ways of measuring them. And, uh, I'm certainly, you know, we've had a number of great discussions, I think, on this issue, and I, I'm, um, I have no question that I would like to see those as part of our looking at our level of student success and sort of student achievement.
I think too, remember the, uh, middle school and the high school principal will be coming to present at the March fifth meeting at the work session right away, and that'll be a good time to ask these questions of, of how anecdotally we're going to measure those, or how numerically we're gonna measure some of those items. So I think that's good, it's a good conversation.
And those are in the strategic plan in front of us too.
Mm-hmm.
So I would just say, we're already looking at graduation rate and, um, what other thing did you mention? Attendance records in the previous category. So I would just say, by association, we assume some level of, um, achievement in these areas then as well, even though, I mean, if we're gonna say we're going, an outcome is gonna be a citizenship skill, we should say, you have to have done two community service projects or attended two, uh, s- uh, city council meetings or something, and then what percentage of students have, uh, done that? I mean, you're gonna flunk 'em or say they don't. But if you're gonna say citizenship skills is something we're building here, I think we have to look at it other than saying, well, we think that's happening 'cause our graduation rate is high. I mean, it's, I'm just trying to be very specific as to what we're, I'm not saying it's not a good goal to try to have, but I'm just, don't wanna, I just wanna make sure we're all in agreement as to what this report on achievement is gonna look like.
James, I don't know if this is of reassurance to you or not, but one of my goals in working with the curriculum committee is to have, you know, an examination of the curriculum in all our instructional areas to ensure that, um, you know, they are supporting all of these student achievement goals. So that it would be, you know, written, written down in black and white that it is our expectation that, and it could be, you know, civic participation, or whatever it might be. I know that there have been some of those kinds of things as requirements of some courses, uh, in the past. Now, where they are, I can't speak to where they are right now. I think we've, I've gotta get, I've been away from the building for a while and, and can't speak to that, you know, authoritatively now. But it would be my intention as part of the curriculum committee to make sure that, uh, as curriculum is examined and written or rewritten, that all of these are addressed in one way, shape, or form, uh, in a variety of areas. If, if this, if the, the curriculum is not addressing these goals, then it may not be appropriate curriculum.
And I see that as the, kind of the gateway for these measures to be communicated to the board, is that's where they should be communicated first, to the curriculum committee, and the curriculum committee comes and reports it to make sure that we are implementing those goals.
So maybe it would help, uh, uh, rather than just say measurable, if, if the word wasn't quantifiable, um, 'cause I think maybe that's what I'm talking about here, whether or not the measure's quant, you know, the measure's quantifiable.
Just put, just put outcomes. Can we just put outcomes instead of not, just outcomes?
Where?
Just cross this piece out, just put outcomes.
Instead of non-measurable, put outcomes? Be measurable is measurable? Non-measurable is something?
Yeah, we can do that for the second, uh, structure too, I guess.
Okay. Um, so I guess there's a question for, in front of the board here about how we want to adopt, um, these notes that, uh, that James brought to us, found on, and make sure everybody knows we're on page one ninety here of the agenda. Um, how we want to, uh, do we want to formalize these into the, to the strategic plan?
Well, I, just again, my two cents worth, and you can do it either way, I think it's going to be, get accomplished one or another. I'd really like to, I don't wanna put pressure, that's probably not the right word, but through, through, through the curriculum committee, I think a lot of this information can be, uh, figured out, and the measurements and all those other things can be done through that curriculum committee's work, and bring it back as a recommendation to the board. This is a great way to start, but I think that helps develop that curriculum committee and gives it a real purpose too. So that would be my suggestion, is go through curriculum. Plus, you haven't listened to the principals yet, and you wanna make sure you have those different things. I don't know how much this is gonna affect the actual statement of vision one. We just wanna make sure we have some measurable outcomes from vision one.
So, so does anybody see a, a need, and maybe specifically James, of actually changing the language as stated in vision one? You would wanna to sort of specify who you were going to be asking, and I think what I'm hearing from Todd, uh, is that we'd be asking the curriculum committee to report on those items, uh, outlined in vision one. Um, uh, does that meet people's needs on the board? Specifically James, but I think others as well.
All right, I, I, is the curriculum committee gonna report on student-teacher ratio, is that in their main work?
Don't know. Todd?
I don't know, and that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, they could, you know, certainly collect that information. I think that's, you know, when, um, we look at the impact of possible cuts, you know, staff-student ratio is certainly gonna be something that's gonna be under consideration. And, um, yeah, I, I, I say the curriculum committee is being renewed, uh, after some period of time, and so we're still kind of trying to sort through that whole process. But what, uh, Todd was saying about, uh, collecting this information and, and providing the board with a report on the extent and the ways and the means that we're, we're accomplishing these student achievement goals certainly seems to be a very appropriate and a desirable, from my point of view, uh, mission for the, the curriculum committee.
All right, so having heard that, um, I guess my question would be, James, do you have a specific recommendation for how would you, how you might like your notes, if at all, to be incorporated into the specific language of the, uh?
Well, I mean, they haven't added anything to our current list, they just put some headings on there that are clarification.
Do you wanna see those headings in there?
Or you could just put it into an addendum, but now we're sort of mixing apples and oranges, sort of randomly through the list. But, yeah, so if people are gonna find it helpful, fine, I mean, I'm not gonna say, don't pass it, I don't.
Sure, I understand. Other questions or comments about?
I just wanna say, here a commitment that in four months, we're gonna get a report that says how we're doing on these, or if it's not, if it's an annual measure, what are we doing? And we don't, that's the only way that you can keep this front and center. But if it's all on the curriculum committee, I'm happy with that.
Um, all right, so, um, I'm gonna suggest mostly to put it out there, uh, that we not make a specific change to the, uh, uh, to the strategic plan as put in front of us. Um, uh, I'm happy to hear objections, uh, if that's not what we should do, but I think that's what I'm hearing. Um, and to ask for, uh, a report, uh, from the curriculum committee, or, or their designees is appropriate perhaps as the way to, to state that, um, on, uh, on progress towards vision one within the district. Um, on, so James suggested a four-month timescale, is that an appropriate timescale?
Well, my understanding is that this vision, um, is, that we're still operating under the, the previous vision through this school year, and that this revised vision is, becomes the, uh, the guide for future planning, and then performance beginning and getting in the.
July first, yeah, July first.
So whatever point the board would like a report, you know, we can set up a, a schedule, and, and the curriculum committee can work to gather the appropriate information and present that to the board.
That's a, that's a, I think, a very good point, Todd, about what this, this, uh, actually applies to. So hearing that, is, is there another suggestion for a timescale? Do we wanna set a timescale? Obviously, we'll be hearing a report on the current strategic vision, uh, or perhaps then on, on some timescale. Do we wanna fix that timescale? Give some direction, I don't know that we need to formalize that with the board, but.
I would just say that we hear a report on, in, uh, in our November meeting. July, August, September, October, for first four months, and we hear it in November.
Is that July, August, September, October?
Yeah, that'd be the four months covered, and we, then the report then in November.
And then go in November.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure, I'm gonna make your report as being to next year. All right, I'm not hearing an objection to that, I don't think we'll vote on that, that'll be an understanding that we have, that Todd, I see, keeping notes on, so.
Got my little focus.
We'll have a, a new curriculum director.
Yep.
Coming on board, and, uh, I think that November seems like a very good target.
I think it's great.
So we do still have a motion, uh, and a second to approve the strategic plan that is in front of us. Uh, any other questions or comments on this, uh, strategic plan?
Just a question, we're approving not the notes, the agenda, everything that's incorporated, so just this document.
That's right. All right, hearing no more questions, uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve the revised twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen strategic plan, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Should've been a little more enthusiastic.
Yeah, I did.
You guys are tired, that was.
Should we, should we try a revote on that one?
That was a lot of work, and I, I do wanna thank the board for all the work that they put into the strategic plan. It's a dynamic document, and I think we've got a good system going, and, and I think we can move forward post it, so thank you.
And I'll reiterate what I said at the very beginning, which is that this strategic plan, uh, should be the, the, the focus of, of what we're doing here in the district, um, and as such, uh, should be available to all community members, and so you can expect to be able to find it shortly, uh, posted online. Um, so, uh, if you're looking for the details of what's in there, uh, please feel free to, to go online, and it should be a prominent link, I'm hoping, on the front page of, uh, of the school district website, so, uh, please check that out. All right. Uh, we are coming up to item number eleven, other items of information. Uh, student representative, we don't have one present tonight. Um, school board members, any items of information for, from school board members?
Um, I, I have one, I have a question. Um, there is a band concert coming up, March twelfth, and they are doing, um, songs from Pixar movies. And the band is dressing up, um, as those members, so I would encourage people to go. But having said that, um, can I miss the March twelfth meeting? Or is there something major?
Are you gonna be dressing up?
No. No, 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 no dressing. I don't know if there's anything major for March or not.
I thought you were gonna suggest that the gorge dresses, or board be.
That would be interesting, um.
You're doing the, uh, financial, the major financial piece at the March fifth meeting discussion, and then the April second meeting will be where you do the actual cuts. Uh, certainly the March, I don't wanna minimize the March twelfth meeting, 'cause it is an important meeting, but I think that would be probably of all the meetings to, to miss, that'd be the one that'd be the easiest.
Thank you.
This is not a, um, a report, but I'd like to have some discussion about how we're going to address that audience that was here before the board. Is it gonna be you, Jason, and Todd communicating back to them, uh, with Ken and Hubert, or whomever else has to be involved, I think we owe them some kind of communication.
Yeah, Jerry, thank you, I was gonna comment on that exact thing, gave it its time too. Um, also to let everybody know, um, from the group that was here, to talk to us about the hockey program, um, before the meeting. before the meeting, I have received a petition that has fifty-two names on it. And I would ask that sometime after the meeting, that everybody take a moment to look at that. And everybody else, as I always understand, there's a packet here of information from that group. And I would encourage them to look at it. As Jerry said, I think there was a large group here tonight, which signifies a serious commitment on their part to, to address what they perceive as a serious situation. So I have asked them to follow up with me. And I have not yet come up with a formalized plan of how to proceed there. But I, I did not want to leave tonight's conversation as the last follow-up with them. So I had planned to follow up, and I'm, I'm not sure at this moment how I'll do so. And I would encourage anybody from the board. I think they'd be happy to chat with any of us. And I think it's appropriate for any of us to have conversations with them on a one-on-one basis. At the least, and I will follow up with board members as I come up with a plan and let you know how, conversations.
But don't we need a recommendation from the superintendent, like we do in?
Can I, can I just interject for a second?
Not tonight, I mean, but, so we go forward.
I think that maybe the first step in this process, Jason, quite honestly, is for you to sit down with, with Mr. Huber, me, and Mr. Turtle to have a discussion, to get you up to speed on everything that's going on. So you have what the school has done with this whole process. And then you and I can visit about how we want to approach the, the group. So I, I think before we jump into anything right now, let's have a visit. And if, if the board is okay sending Jason, if you want another board member, I'm fine with that too. It doesn't make any difference to me. I think, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. I should've said that as well. I, I wanna make sure I speak to, to administration. But I, I do think Jerry's point is, is very important. The community that was here needs to feel like they were heard. And so I wanna do what I can to make sure that they feel listened to. And unfortunately, with the constraints of the meeting and the way that we have to run them and the short time we had, I'm, I'm not sure we were able to do that in the, the way that would have been best. But, yeah, I, I certainly won't be recommending any action outside of that. That will come from the administration. I just wanna make sure as a board that, that we're acknowledging when the citizens of our community come to us with a concern about the district.
But I wanna commend you, Jason, for giving the community an opportunity to be heard. The way you orchestrated and structured it, kept it at the appropriate levels.
So do we have a timeframe that we can say this will be resolved by?
I don't have one. I'm gonna wait until the conversation, so.
Yeah, if we can wait for the conversation to occur, we can, we can send an email out or, or I can send some information out for what, what we find out as soon as it comes to us. But there are other variables.
I should say, I don't know that this will resolve the issue, but I will try to have conversations in the next week or two, so that doesn't.
Well, I think this needs to be resolved before the next board meeting. So I would suggest that this be a very high priority. And if we need a special board meeting to take action on it, we do that.
There are legal parameters you have to go through 'cause there's a due process piece that you have to take care of. And there are some legal pieces that we have to make sure we follow. Otherwise, I don't wanna put the, the board in some sort of a liability issue, but, yeah.
All right. Any other items of information from the board? All right, items of information from the superintendent?
I gotta go back to my bubble here. We had a tech, we've been meeting with the technology committee. Maria's left now, but we've talked about things like a virtual school and courses that are offered online. One thing of information that you may not know is that we have students that are taking twenty-eight courses through an online program called Infinity. And we could possibly join that and pay a lesser rate for these kids than what we're paying right now, because we're not part of this consortium, which is somewhere way up north in Minnesota. And we'll take a look at that to see if that makes sense. The hard thing is that if you join it next year, you don't know for sure if those kids are gonna go online or not. Then you've already paid the fee. But this year, you have twenty-eight classes that are being taken. It gets to be pretty expensive for that. So we're talking about some of the online pieces. Met with the Community Education Task Force to discuss what we're looking at our community ed director. And those interviews are coming up. I sent an email out to the board. Continue to meet with the Fair Bowl Leaders class. We head up to the Capitol at our next meeting with the entire Fair Bowl Futures class. All twenty-two of us will be in our blue shirts up there at the Capitol, taking a tour and visiting with legislators. I continue to meet with legislators on behalf of the schools. In fact, I will be testifying tomorrow on behalf of our admin lease levy, which amounts to approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. Now, if the, let's, if the, if that gets signed into law, then we wouldn't be able to see that money next year. So it's not gonna help us offset any of the deficit. But it would potentially come in two years if the school board were to approve that admin lease levy. Does everybody understand what I'm talking about? That's the building where we are right now, that we lost that levy because of all the different things that were happening at the Capitol last year. So I'll be up there tomorrow on behalf of that. Doing a lot of reading in the kindergarten rooms and visiting, I visited Roosevelt at Miss Maldonado's classroom. And they talked about Mr. Ronaine's nostril and heart. And they had a virtual tour of going through that whole thing. Did you see it, Allison? Yeah, it was good. So I participated with that too. And the kids were certainly a lot quicker than I was. Also attended the Strive banquet Sunday night. The Rotary gave out a lot of scholarships, approximately twenty thousand dollars worth of scholarships to our seniors, and that was a nice recognition for those kids last night. We are consistently working with our leadership team on the 2012-2013 budget. We'll get you that information at that March fifth meeting. So you'll have the priority list and what we've talked about, so you can start discussing it. You have about a month timeframe to decide if you wanna have other sort of public forums or meetings with other folks to, to discuss the different cuts. So at the March fifth meeting, kind of be prepared for that of how you want to strategically go through this cut process from March fifth, when you receive the information, to April second, when you make the final determination. You'll have another board meeting in between of the March twelfth meeting that you can have a discussion as well for that. And then also just talking about, we also talked about a levy discussion before the March fifth board meeting. One of the items that came up in the finance committee was technology and a potential technology levy. We're really in need of some resources for technology. Our phone system is really in tough shape. And if it does go down, it's probably gonna have to come out of, or a good portion of it come out of the general fund to support that phone system. Our switches are really out of date. If you can imagine a highway going a hundred miles an hour and that's our bandwidth coming in and then getting to our building, and we can only operate on like ten megabytes of bandwidth because of the switches that we have that are outdated, we can't utilize the speed and infrastructure that's on the outside of our building internally. And so there's a significant need for some of the technology pieces for that. And that's part of the levy. I know you've talked about an operating levy too. But are you interested in meeting ahead of time on March fifth to discuss some levy opportunities or some information for particularly Colleen and I to start looking into?
So Todd and I talked about this a little bit earlier. It's been mentioned at the last couple meetings to think of, think about having a discussion at the board level about a possible levy. And I thought was that needed to happen sooner rather than later. And so Todd and I were sort of struggling to find an appropriate moment to have that discussion. So our suggestion was before the next work session, as we did the last work session.
And that's only the next four days.
So next week.
Yeah, that is, yeah, it's really tight, isn't it?
So you would amend the starting time of the work session or not?
That would be what I would suggest, yes.
What are thoughts on doing that? We, we didn't wanna make it simply a part of that work session. There's a number of other big items on that work session. It's gonna be an important meeting. We'll start looking at suggested budget issues there. And so there was plenty to do at that meeting. So I didn't wanna simply try to cram that in, it's too important. So if we're gonna do it, I thought we needed to start earlier and be a little more fresh. So I would make the suggestion of four o'clock, which is, I think, when we started the last one. Thoughts on the four o'clock start time to our work session next Monday?
Plenty of time to post that.
And we have the.
I'm out of town, so it's fine.
Technology, we can probably.
Yeah, we could just get you in, James.
I think that's illegal now. You can't attend weekends by remote.
You would say that, even for.
I wonder if there's a vote.
Yep.
Others on the, on the board? Tom, Jerry's fine with that. Tom?
I have to make an adjustment in my work schedule, but I think that's.
I, yeah, I have to make an adjustments, but I should be able to.
Whatever, four o'clock, so. All right, so I'll note that when I talk about dates to remember then.
And we'll get some information for you, for the levy and the technology. I know that Marius has a lot of that data already taken care of.
Could Marius send out a reminder, email, remote? Change? Kathy, what did I just say?
Marie.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm just throwing everybody out.
Yeah, we'll repost it.
I already scheduled it.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have.
All right.
I have a process question.
Okay.
If possible cuts are going to be discussed at our March fifth meeting, is it appropriate to share that list with the curriculum committee on March eighth?
Yeah, I think that's, you'll, it'll be the first time you'll see the March fifth. So I think that's the appropriate process now, is to talk to your constituents to see where your priorities are gonna be for the list. Yeah.
All right. Seeing other items of information. Item number twelve, dates to remember. February twenty-eighth, 2012, three forty-five, Wellness Committee meeting at the district office. March fifth, at five thirty, a work session, I'm sorry, at four o'clock. A work session at the district office. March eighth, at three thirty, Curriculum Committee meeting at the district office. March twelfth, at seven thirty a.m., finance meeting at the district office. And March twelfth, at six thirty p.m., regular boarding meeting here in City Hall, just two weeks from today. And then to be decided, a policy meeting, I guess, that you are still working on a schedule for?
Yeah.
Okay. Please.
I'd like to make a caveat, how difficult was it to prepare for this meeting, doing both the Word Book and the paper?
It, not bad. I didn't print, I didn't have to print twenty-one copies of the, the entire agenda. Only, there were some board members that said they didn't care to have the hard copies. So I printed, I believe, fourteen, saved it for their.
Very, very user-friendly.
Very user-friendly.
Although I think social media, school district, probably, but.
All right. Item number thirteen is a closed session. So we will, I always forget, do we adjourn? We don't adjourn. We recess the public session whilst it's a five-minute recess for the board. And then we'll reconvene in a few minutes for a closed session.